Good morning, it's Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. My name is Don Smiker and I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my right, I have Nen Flagel, to my left, I have Mike Steinas. We have Bjorn from IT, we have Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann, an executive assistant in the back. We have Brittany from the press. And first up, we have, is there anybody online or in here, visitors and citizens that would like to address the board today? I see Jessica online. Jessica, would you like to say anything?
No, sir, we are just visiting for a Boy Scout activity.
Oh, well, welcome. We'll try to be entertaining. All right, moving on, next, we have Josh Bolt and the city manager for Moncoca, and Scott Warren, Executive Director of the YMCA, and they're gonna discuss a splash pad.
Morning.
Morning. Morning, Boy Scouts. Um, so Scott Warren, YMCA Director, and I are here uh looking to file a CAT grant application with the state of Iowa, the Economic Development Authority. Um, a requirement to do so is county involvement in that application package. So we're requesting a thirty thousand dollar contribution contingent on successful award of a CAT grant if it were to occur. Uh, the other item in that resolution, and I don't have a pinned down cost without speaking with Jayden directly, but if we're building a feature this size, which you're looking at, the YMCA's parking lot is just not enough. And then you have winter ball leagues and all sorts of youth activities that happen at the YMCA, or football, or Halloween event. Our view is that we have a bad parking problem along Summit Street, and I remember last year watching green trucks come to a stop, so our objective is to make designated parking on Madison Street a little more organized and allow people to park more safely to go into the YMCA, and also to visit this aquatic park, which you're looking at. And so, unlike what we had with Summit Main Street where there's in-depth stormwater infrastructure, and I think some more effort on Jayden's part. Uh, I'm seeking some sort of in-kind request on Jayden's work to do the horizontal infrastructure for just lining up some curb survey and getting us to a bid document, so uh, I don't think that turns into inspection services.
You okay with that, Jay?
But um, our view is the city, if you, if you come into another project where you're requesting city assistance for something else, we're willing to do so. Uh, we're following some baseline requirements for uh, our submission to the CAT grant application, and Scott has been pretty amazing from a private fundraising perspective, and I couldn't do what he does, but he just had a YMCA capital campaign committee, and he could probably provide an update overall.
Yeah, no, the campaign's going well. You know, feasibility study, the results they got back showed that uh, we should be able to generate the support needed um, to uh, to make this project happen. Obviously, at our county, our city Finance Committee, um, they had approved one point two five million dollar TIF over twenty years. Uh, that'll go to the uh, go to the um council here next Monday, so pending approval, we would go ahead and have that. We anticipate being able to raise um, should be able to raise well over a million dollars in private contributions, and then uh, with the CAT contribution, fingers crossed, the dollars are still there, and they look favorably on project. We can generate that support. Uh, we've also identified with the CAT and an additional grants, about eight hundred thousand dollars uh, in total grants that we'll be applying for. So a lot of different funding sources, um, really actively working uh, on all of those. I know from a timing standpoint, talking with Marla Quinn, um, and uh contacted IEDA um, that from a timing standpoint, we want to have that grant uh, submission between October twenty-second and twenty-ninth, so it can be considered. I believe it was November twenty-first is when IEDA needs. Uh, so they would consider the CAT grant at that point in time, so we're hoping we can count on your support. Um, is Josh at online?
Yeah, we're, we're um potentially looking at a five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar CAT grant application. Uh, that pot of money for the state is ten million dollars. It's first come, first served, so uh, we're trying to push this along quicker while funds are available.
Where's this gonna, sorry, where's this gonna, is this gonna sit west of the Y then?
Yes.
In that big green space area?
Won't have to be a YMCA member to use this aquatic park. Um, effectively, we are contracted to YMCA, needs just a minor amendment to go out and shake the chemicals, make sure pH is where it needs to be. Um, and the mere traffic involved that should increase YMCA programming, so um, council's bonding commitment is an up to number. And as grants come into it, and as the private fundraising goes into it, the further depressed that city commitment will become when it comes time to execute any sort of, any sort of bond. So we're uh we're excited. I'm honestly surprised we're sitting in this position talking about a CAT grant, because we just worked together at Prairie Creek, and when um, when Nathan Jones and I went to present at that board meeting, you know, they cited last award for CAT, which was Together We Build Twenty Twenty or Twenty Twenty-One, so there must be some backroom map where they know who's gotten what, but uh, they've, they've been very clear with us that, you know, you're welcome to apply. It's first come, first served. It sounds like a great project, and we're, we're pursuing it.
I think we have honestly a pretty good relationship with Iowa Economic Development Group, you know, the whole. Um, obviously, in kind from us, like Jayden Services and whatnot, is obviously, I would think, could be some sort of a benefit. I don't know if that any financial, but um, I think it's a huge benefit to all of Jackson County, to be honest, and I think all of Jackson County can do that. You know, yes, it, when, when we all talk about this kind of stuff, it all comes down to money. You know, and I think honestly, my opinion is that we would offer X amount of support, you know, like, I mean.
This seems kinda like the typical ask, you know, you, you guys signed it for us, we were looking at the senior center, and it's, you know, we kinda play tag back and forth, you know, with the, the same kind of funding, so.
But, you know, it, it's, it's a part of being good neighbors, to be honest, so, and we, we hopefully, we can keep that communication and, and that relationship with, with the city. Because in the past, it might not have been as good, but I think we do have a good relationship. Yeah, no, I think it benefits all of the county. I, I'm, I'm in support.
Two things, a little on topic, but off topic. Mentioned the senior center support agreement. I don't know, did we ever do anything official with that?
We're still in.
We haven't officially applied for the CAT grant, so, but we've got verbal commitment from the city, so.
So I would make a motion to approve the resolution for CAT grant, uh, support.
Can I ask a question first before you make that motion?
Or question us?
So my question is, is do you pick, do the wording on two, two places, do you, the wording, it says um, according to the rest, and, yeah, it says um, and committing local management an amount no less than thirty thousand. Which means shouldn't it say no?
So thirty thousand and above, should it say no more, you mean?
It should say no more than thirty thousand.
That's, that's not an issue to us. I think I just modeled that off for a previous resolution.
And I think we had it corrected in the Prairie Creek.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I would make that motion with that amendment, uh, for the wording change, uh, to the Aquatic Park Project.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve Resolution Number eleven.
Forty-six.
Forty-six dash oh-nine dash thirty dash twenty twenty-five, Resolution of Permit Support Moncoca Harry YMCA Aquatic Park CAT Grant Application and Committal of Now No More Than Thirty Thousand Dollars. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys, good luck, appreciate it.
They should have someone gonna be here. Mr. Jayden Schuck, we've talked to you once, well, let's talk some more. Well, now.
Morning.
Got any engineers?
Your recruitment process called. As expected, I guess. You got knocking on the door?
There's a few applicants I'll send some information to, and there are some, are people that came up to the booth that took like our job posting and little packets we put together, but there's been no some, or uh yeah, there's been nothing. They haven't submitted anything, I guess, up to this point.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, we're, you know, so you talk to your neighbors, you talk to your cousins, and, you know.
And some of them, I think, were looking. A lot of it was geared, heard a lot of students there, it appeared, were looking for internships and not full-time, and I'd imagine how that goes is they look for internships, and once they get to or they get an internship at, say, a private firm or wherever, um, they generally probably tend to get hired there as they work have continual internships.
Well, I guess if we need them to work here for a little while and not get paid. I mean, we can do that, too.
So, yeah, can we do the internship?
I mean, if we need an internship to entice people here so they can work pro bono, I mean.
We have a program where, you know, you're working whatever we pay and uh, you know, for X amount of time, and.
So, it's definitely something I'm gonna consider about internships, because I guess not only does it give them a chance to know what it's like here, but also gives us a chance to know what they're like before there's that.
They can live and work here and play, and uh, it's a pretty nice place, you know?
Have you ever thought, I mean, are there, are you, are there specific programs around eastern Iowa or the Midwest that you look at more than others, or? Because I just think about when you're in school, uh, I think to some of my kids' colleges they went to, they had companies, my son's an electrician, they had companies coming in and enticing and, and doing presentations, bringing meals and stuff. I didn't know if there's some engineering programs that seem to be more of a hotbed where you can go in and just give a talk, because again, when you're getting all these private companies coming in and kinda whining and dining and everything, government work kinda seems to fall by the wayside.
It does.
And to come in and say, these are things that we do, and this is benefits and, you know, all that kind of stuff, to give them a little bit of light shed on something they probably don't hear that much of.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I know the Iowa County Engineers Association, they also had a booth there, and or they're on behalf of any counties with openings as well, so, and they were able to get some applications, and one of theirs was actually a student who had actually interned at a pre, or at a different county over around Ames area, where the county was, but and I think they were one that also had a family member that worked for a secondary roads department, so you know. Like you said, it's very lit, most people are more, like you said, attracted to the private side versus the government side, but.
Maybe you should put out for an internship next summer, so.
Yeah, I'm kinda maybe getting off of here a little bit, but it's interesting you say that, because I take, you know, kids up to to Career Day, if you will, if you can, there's just tons of vendors and people there, electricians and plumbers and backhoe operators, and you think about that, you know, we have conservation, we have secondary roads, we have engineer services. There's a lot of stuff going on in county. It might be a booth.
You know? Could.
This is hot.
I would need help on that one.
Oh, we're just a forum.
No, I, I think the internship, I, me and Jayden have already kinda talked about that. I think that's a great idea for the summertime to even if it doesn't drum somebody necessarily our way, it's a good help for them.
Sure.
You say you got a lot of work coming next year.
There is. Which is good.
All right.
Um, first up is a entrance permit for Julie McAndrew. Um, it's a field entrance off of Bellevue Cascade Road, Richland Township, Section Twenty. And as more than sufficient sight distance approaching from the east and west, uh, this one does not require culverts, so pretty cut and dry. So our department recommends approval.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
You got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve a field entrance for Julie McAndrew on the Bellevue Cascade Road on Richland Township, Section Twenty. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Next is a utility permit for Moncoca Valley. Um, basically, essentially a rebuild of their power line along Twelfth Street over at Sugar Creek area. That's in Fairfield Township, Section Thirty-One. Uh, yeah, just for the most part, it's rebuilding their existing overhead power line, but there is a portion of new underground fiber through a portion of that. But it would all be bored underneath. Sorry, it's over the road. Um. And there's over the road and also underground, and anything that'd be underground would be bored, so pretty, that is also very standard, so our department recommends approval on that as well.
Make a motion to approve the underground utility permit for MBEC as presented.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve the utility permit for Moncoca Valley Electric Cooperative Power Line Rebuild on Twelfth Street, Fairfield Township, Section Thirty-One. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry.
I can give a brief update on construction. I don't know if Nate or Conservation's gonna plan to come in, so I don't wanna steal this thunder, but at Prairie Creek, they are for the South Bridge, which is the ninety footer. Um, traders have poured, or driven the pile, and poured both abutments, and the prefab bridge is actually on site there, and we'll don't know when they'll actually put it up on the abutments, but it's on site, and I think they're gonna before they set that bridge, they're gonna work on the hundred and fifty foot bridge along, adjacent to Highway sixty-four. So that's moving right along sometime after his crews are done there. They're gonna start on our day labor projects, which don't know which one first, but I imagine being that Twenty-Fourth Street Bridge is closer, doesn't make the most sense. But either way, they'll jump to our day labor bridges. Um, and I have roughly felt out timeframe of the Moorhead Bridge fix, and that'll be sometime around just before Thanksgiving. Is the plan for that. Um.
Most of.
And you have all the plan.
What's that?
Most of harvest should be done by.
You have all the plans and whatnot for that, what's gonna be done, you know?
Yep. Um, but, and I will also, that's, I'm gonna resubmit that bridge again for the County Bridge Construction Fund this winter to give it a place, because last year, we submitted it, we were unsuccessful. Um, we were number four, the DOT picked a word to the top two, so like to believe, it depends what other counties have for other applicant bridges, but I'd like to believe we stand a good chance again.
Well, if them two are gone, we just move up to, then we're automatic.
Well, unless they don't have a bridge, they're holding their back pocket to get done, like, for example, our Damon Bridge actually scores better than Moorhead, but there's no way with us already gonna have Iron Bridge on our plate that we can even make Damon Bridge happen, so, you know, that's one that for lack of a better term, is in our back pocket right now, so.
Right, speaking of Iron Bridge, we have the one grant.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we sitting as far as proceeding? Are we not proceeding, or, because that grant does Twilight, the, the, is it?
The DOT one that we received, the two million? Yes, from, you have three years to get it to letting from the execution of the funding agreement. We have actually never received that funding agreement yet. The DOT knows about it, but we have not received it, so it's in our benefit right now that it's on their plate, we're on their schedule right now, but they're taking their time, which benefits us.
Okay.
Um, and if you recall back in, was it August or June, whenever this past summer, we didn't get, we were informed we were not awarded the race grant, which was the other grant, right, from Iron Bridge. Um, there's talk amongst other counties that um, likely to submit again, because we're, we scored very well, uh, and I know, probably the same old story, we heard last year, we scored very well, but this year, we had the change in administrations, there were a lot of things that got uh, the notice of funding agreement got some uh, what do you wanna say, amendments to it, whatever. So there's a lot of change. Well, we're gonna keep the current administration, so it's, the counties, six counties in that joint application, ourselves included, the general consensus is we're gonna apply it, because you can't get it if you don't apply, and yeah, that's, our portion of that grant would be like four and a half million dollars worth, so that would be a huge relief to us to but worst-case scenario, we're still gonna make Iron Bridge happen. Um, because it's not getting any better. None of the bridges are, for the most part, um. Then uh, our crews are also working on upon two eighty-seventh street, where it's a, was a bridge, it's gonna replace the culvert, um. The bridge has been tore out, the culvert is getting fabricated this week, and will be delivered next, so it'll be installed sometime next week, and get that open back up. Uh, reclaim is it's dry, but we're going. Um, we're on the last stretch here. We should be done by the end of next week. Since it is dry, but it's temperature, everything's good working weather as far as that goes.
So as far as your timeframe and, and whatnot for that um, for the reclaim process, I mean, I know if you do a deadline or get X amount of miles, if, if there, if the weather permits and, and conditions are right, could you extend that a little bit, or is that something you have other uh, we, on the books?
Yeah, we got other stuff, like, there's, well, brush cutting, I want, you know, especially with, do dark hollow road, um, there's ditching that can be done. I know the guys have also been working on patching, it's just trying to, we'll catch up on some of the stuff that's kinda been on the back burner this summer.
Well, some of it gets maybe put back a little bit, and we don't wanna lose interest somewhere else, and uh top progress, you know, we're making good progress. Heard good things, you know, I heard good things about two sixteenth, um, when that was done, heard good things. Uh, I hear really bad things of a, of a situation where we don't have much control of, it's Highway sixty-two. And, I mean, consistently get calls and I run into people and say, what can we do about it? Well, I've called the DOT, and I've talked to Jayden about it, we might try to make a little more contact, and if we can't push the button a little bit, but it's probably the worst road in Jackson County.
It is very not ideal. Makes our county road shine.
It does, yeah, it makes ours look good, because, I mean, yeah, there's, and I've talked to uh, representatives from the DOT, and he says it's on the top of their list, but that, that's it, doesn't give me a good timeframe, right?
I know, at one point, they were talking about cement overlay or whatever. You know, they even talked to you about detours and.
Mm-hmm, so I think they're trying to brainstorm what their plan of attack is. I haven't heard anything set stone, like, when they're gonna do it, but I do know they have a bridge rehab project slated for I believe fiscal year twenty-seven. Uh, on their bridge on sixty-two over Brush Creek, uh, most people probably know it by poolers down there. Um, that's scheduled for fiscal year twenty-seven, and what type of rehab? I don't know what it entails, it's just on their website, it's a rehab. So I'm sure that'll play into it as well, I don't think. If they were to try to sneak in a road rehab. I don't know if they can come after the road rehab. I don't know, but yeah, I've, I've sent an email to the DOT, just kinda asking some questions.
And while we have the press, or do you wanna talk about your Facebook page?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Our department slowly but surely has finally created a Facebook page, uh, similar to, I know Clinton County's got one, I believe some other surrounding ones have one. But um, it's the easiest way for people to find a link to it is if you go to our Jackson County website, and under Departments, go to Engineers' Office and Secondary Roads, and once you go to basically our department's webpage, you'll see the Facebook icon, just click on that, and it'll take you right there, but we don't have anything updated yet, but what our intent is for it is to basically inform the public of upcoming like road or bridge closures, um, any construction projects or emergency-related stuff, and
Weather.
Weather, and as we get a little more familiar with it, and uh, because I guess I'll be, I don't have a personal Facebook, so it's gonna be a little bit new to me. But once I get familiar with it, we will post like say, construction project updates, where it's at, uh, maybe some pictures, stuff like this, but just another tool to help inform the public, um, mainly two big pushes for, we all know the Z fifteen bridge or three hundred sixty-second Avenue Bridge is will happen this spring. Um, and that's on a paved route that sees close to seven hundred cars a day, so that's gonna affect a lot of people, so to try to, with this implemented, we can try to get the word out as we get closer to help spread the word a little bit faster, but yes, our department does have, um, its own Facebook page.
I guess I would encourage.
Positive comments only.
I would encourage to make sure you're looking at Jackson County, Iowa also.
Oh, yeah.
It's actually called Jackson County Secondary Roads, that's all written out. Department is abbreviated, and then you click on that, and it's a secondary road system in Jackson County, um, Iowa.
I should create, I should create an add Iowa in the name, somewhere.
Or just down there.
Can get Ohio or Wisconsin.
Well, uh, when you pull the Facebook up, the profile picture is the seal of Jackson County, Iowa, so that, that
Gives you an idea, that's your.
Gives you an idea.
I think it's a great idea for us to keep up with the times, you know, social media obviously is out there. We can sure, I, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of them put that as their favorite, so they can comment, but at least we know what they're thinking and how, and how it works, you know, I mean, we want public input. Um, we don't need a lot of negative public input, but we'll get it, and that's fine. You know, we, we appreciate all the public input we get, and we take it all into consideration, you know? So it's, it's part of our job to, to listen to them, you know? Um, if they're ill-informed, we suggest to get informed before you maybe make a comment, that's a little derogatory.
We're trying, we're doing everything we can to. Funds are obviously only go so far each year, but trying to replace as many bridges, do as much road improvements each and every year as we can, but.
Well, and we do it on every project, we said it all comes down to money.
And again, that's not the point where you you know, if you still have an issue, you should be calling the Engineers' Office, not just blasting it out there, because we're not gonna monitor it for every this road needs graded, so we're gonna run and jump and go there either, it's for, we keep the public informed and.
Yeah. It's always cured most of the issues at the coffee club or something, but yeah, we wanna hear.
Especially as we get to reclaim, and we have, like, I would have came in beneficial this summer when we had two crews, well, we still do have two crews going, but a reclaim, you know, kinda puts other stuff like we just talked about on the back burner, just to at least inform the public, like, yes, we're aware of some of these, uh, but there's a reason why. Um, there's probably some disagreements, but at least they know, are aware of the reason why. I guess, or just more informed.
Yeah, I looked at Clinton County's a lot for you know, road conditions and things like that, so.
No, okay, that'll be good, so, anything else for Jayden? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right. Lisa, are you ready?
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith, unauthorized publication in the official newspapers. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Nen, second by Mike, to approve the minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 The city's school election is November fourth, and a week later would be November eleventh, which means that that's Veterans Day, and we will be closed that day. Um, by law, we have to canvas the November fourth city school election uh, the next day. So unfortunately, we can't move that meeting from Tuesday to Monday, it has to be on Wednesday, November twelfth. So in order to do that, I need a motion to reschedule the November eleventh meeting to Wednesday, November twelfth at nine AM due to the Veterans Day holiday.
Vote to approve.
I'd second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve, uh, rescheduling the regular November eleventh um, supervisor meeting to Wednesday, November twelfth at nine AM due to Veterans Day holiday. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
If there's nothing else for the board today, thank you.
All right, Luann?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How we doing?
Beautiful life all day. Okay, calendar for this week. Um, tomorrow morning at nine AM is an RTA meeting. I'm interviewing for Zoom, by Zoom for all of you. And at five o'clock Wednesday night is the Wednesday's our possible meeting, at Innovate Fund Twenty, for any of you that wanna attend that. Oh, I don't have anything on your calendar for the rest of the, the week. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October seventh, at nine AM. Um, the other bit of business I have this morning is Dr. Peterson. Um, kind of medical examiner submitted a request for two appointments of medical examiner investigators. Um, those being Jordan Fullerton and Jamie Stainer.
Um, you're looking for approval, is that what?
Looking for approval of those appointments.
So moved.
Start at that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nen, to approve appointment of Jordan Fullerton and Jamie Stainer to become a medical examiner investigator. Um, pending course completion, correct? Are they done, or?
Well, according to the letter he sent, they are done. Uh, we need to see copies of those certifications, because we have to submit them to the state along with the minutes of this meeting, so we'll follow up with him on getting copies of those certificate, but he said they're done, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carry.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. You wanna call Shelley, or?
I said I'm here now.
Well, boards and commissions, um, the only thing on there, we did have a workforce, uh, uh, Chief Elected Officer meeting to talk about the combination of the Mississippi Valley and the South Central, uh, districts. And they came up with the Eastern Iowa Workforce Development Board is what the new group, the combined group's gonna be called, but I think they're still gonna somewhat function independently, you know, there's still gonna be a group overseeing South Central, there's still gonna be us on East Central, and, or the Mississippi Valley. Um, we're kinda putting together a board that will oversee the whole operation. We got the, the skeleton, so much, kinda fleshed out a little bit on that, getting those things in in, in place and making. In in place and making sure we have the number of, when I say board and overseeing a board, we are not considered the board. It is the uh, it has to be so many commercials, so many industrials, so many business related kind of people, so we're getting that in place combining. From the our existing boards of the two regions, so um we're just in the process of fleshing that stuff out right now, so. That's what we're doing, otherwise everything else seems to be clicking along. I don't know if we bring this up now, but uh with the E C I A. And the R T A asked for funding over the gap, you know, you sent an email out and. At some point in time, we should probably talk about that and figure out where we stand on um their ask as they look for funding going forward.
Well, yeah, and and I I guess we've had private conversations or not private, but. We've all talked to Chandra at times and they, so I guess it would come out in the meeting tomorrow, maybe somewhat. Um, we had a municipal league meeting, uh it was interesting. So again, we talk about, we have, um it's it's the meeting of all the county mayors and. Law enforcement and whatnot, crime stoppers, so um the sheriff was there and went over some of the. Things that were going on in the county, of course, with law enforcement and. We talked about the crime stoppers of some of these crimes that are unsolved and offered rewards that we often offer rewards and they are available. But we also talked about our balance, so they're talking about maybe having some type of fundraiser or maybe something for the crime stopper. Itself, the balance in their budget, so that. It could have, we could offer um rewards, if you will, for unsolved issues and stuff that goes unprotected, so. And uh as far as the radios go, the radios, uh Lynn has been around to the schools, so they've got radios in all the schools and. They're connected, so that is a a positive. Uh, Sibilla is the only one left for their radios installed for the county for the uh. Um, basic system. And Dawn Danielson was there, gives an update on the brownfield sites and updates on that, so if there is. County buildings and municipal buildings that are brownfield or dilapidated, uh there is funds available, so she stressed to. Apply for that kind of stuff. I mean, we, again, we talked about the hospital and they've been in constant contact with Josh about that, so. I mean, it's obvious on their radar, so they're looking at that. And actually, May, May was there also at the meeting and talked a little bit about the new law for open meeting. Education, if you will, so they're gonna be certified to do that and they hope to get, you know, we talked about it before together. Um, putting input for everybody, maybe everybody get together, so we're all in qualification for open meetings. Laws as they have changed, you know, a lot of people didn't know they were changing, so. I mean, some of these people that we we appreciate their. That they volunteer and serve on these committees, but they just don't get connected if we get a meeting every two months, you know, so. Um, a little bigger news from the waste authority, I would say. I had a meeting uh yesterday, it was short and sweet, but basically material is backed up. And which wasn't what we wanted to hear, so we are in the process or they're in the process of having a. Opening. It's a temporary opening, of course, uh we won't be allowed, according to the laws, won't be allowed to take commercial. Uh, like from the municipalities and such, but we will be allowed to take, we're gonna set up so we can get the scale working. Um temporarily and the scale loader to load at least one trailer load a day. Um, so we could take private stuff, you know, these contractors are really getting uh excited about this and. So we're gonna get a temporary um office house, scale house for them. Basically, it's a losing, lose, losing funding proposition, but we need to do something here. The community's not happy and we're not happy, we're a little upset with the way the process all went. This takes time when you're, when dealing with the insurance companies, that kind of number, you know, for damages, so it's uh. And again, it's a lot of material, so the material got backed up, we we hope. Plan is to be up and open temporary to the public in a month.
Hmm, that'll be good.
Good news, good news. Our our Iris meeting, basically, everything's kind of running smooth there. They just had to refile all their paperwork that they're in compliance with all for all of their USDA grants. Which is basically where they go through mainly for any funding for any projects that get done in the area. Dresslers, of course, has been up and running, they really haven't had any complaints on that um in our area. Um, they'll be looking at, you know, like the park closing, their water supplies down and stuff like that, so. Getting their new figures out for that, so. But in our area, they really haven't had too many things, other areas, they've had like some bubbles in their. Bladders for their waist and stuff that they've been taking care of, but. I'm always going well on that front.
I guess I do have one more thing, uh I will be meeting with uh some of the Together We Build people on Thursday at nine because we did last Thursday. Received notification from the fair office that they'll be terminating their management contract of the Together We Build building, so. We're gonna come sort through some of the logistics on that and uh go from there, but. That did officially come, so we'll be going through that and we'll see how it goes out.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Questions? So Andrew and uh Virginia Brewer did come into the office yesterday, we did discuss opioid funding. So we were discussing, um and Nan was there uh at the same time, so we were all kind of having this discussion. I got hold of Dawn and she's going to run a comb through air and then she's headed up door, so so she gets here, whatever, however long it takes her to drive from. So anyway, we we did discuss the the funding, um you know, my original knee jerk reaction was if we get. Uh a medication for someone that's incarcerated in the jail. You know, if we get a thirty day supply and these people are here for two days, that's an example, we have twenty eight days of medicine that. That, um, you know, I was questioning what we're gonna do with that medicine, but they actually send it home with the person. So if they're here. Two days out of thirty, they send twenty eight days worth of medicine home. And at first I was like, you know, I don't know if that's a good, it's not my decision, obviously, but after discussing this with Andrew in Virginia. Um, it kind of makes sense because they're only gonna get a thirty day supply. So if we would send someone home, they'd have to do without for twenty eight days. They can't go get another prescription. So anyway, the question that I have for the board is. If you have someone in there for six months, that's how long they're gonna be in there, do you want? Andrew to submit a form once a month or one form for six months?
Uh, yeah, I I don't know that you can anticipate six months, the things change a lot within that six month period.
What happened, I mean, I'm just, that was the question is, we don't know how long they're gonna be there, so that was the question.
I mean, I questioned what what are, not what's our typical, but what is, how long can we stay? And they were like thirty days of or one year of sentencing, but they could actually end up being there a year, six months if they don't. You know.
Approved it every month or is there a timeframe?
I think every month is a good.
I just, you know, do we incur medical costs to have them come in and get a uh. New subscription or prescription every thirty days? I mean, this is where if we know whether they're gonna be six months. You know, if they're willing to write a ninety day, I mean, I guess it all depends on, it's gonna be kind of on an as new individual.
We don't get to dictate what the script is wrote, it's whatever their physician feels. We can ask Oster. For House if that's where we're getting it. They also mentioned another company that might be picking up some of this, but. It's kind of. The doctor dictates. The quantity and how much or how long, you know, type of deal, so. You know, we can ask Oster House sometimes that we only want like a seven day supply of their thirty day script. Type of deal, if we know that it's a short lived period for us, and she tries to watch them type of things.
I guess, I guess we should ask Andrew this is, we have one person that needs this in i- in in jail. I mean, this isn't gonna be something, somebody gets, you know, busted for drinking and driving or whatever. And while they're sitting awaiting arrangement, they're not posted bail, how do they get identified? Is this a prior existing prescription or is this something they want? That, you know, I'm in jail now, I need, I, this is something I've been wanting to get, I mean, how does that get into the system because?
So if they, if they're not on it, from what I took from her conversation is. One, it would have to be like a. You know, it has to be prescribed from the doctor, so you know, that could be something that. They call like verifrench and verify that they are on this or that they're on it for, you know, cause I also. Questioned, you know, are we making sure that, you know, they're on it for. You know, if we're submitting it under the op- opioid, we wanna make sure that they have that dependency. Listed as part of their deal because we don't want them to be getting something that's. Off labeled and I threw out like the G L P one drugs, you know, we, if we're paying for it, we wanna make sure it's a diabetic. You know, so we wanna make sure that opioid issue, if that's what we're filing.
Well, they have to stay in our parameters. There's guidelines that we have to follow, so I would assume that's part of the guidelines that it's here at, you have to be subscribed to this prior.
Uh, it just says for treatment of incarcerated individuals.
Right.
I would assume there are guidelines.
I mean, if they feel they're needed, then they'll contact the doctor and have them evaluate.
I think the other thing that we asked Andrew to do is we would like this medication to be um submitted to the A S O for payment first. So we want them to either pay it or deny it. So we're we're working on this, um you know, you can have three inmates, so that's why. I wasn't really sure what the feelings of the board were as far as coming in and doing it once a month. Like I said, we've asked him to submit it to the A S O to see if they'll pay it. I mean, there potentially could be other costs the way it sounds, but. Like I said, my original thought, when he said, well, yeah, we sent it home with them, but I understand that now, that kind of makes sense. And again, it's not my decision, I just was looking at the funding part. And you know, the other thing is that we're gonna need some. I guess we're asking our pharmacies to to work with us a little bit because obviously this all takes time. And to to get the prescription, to get somebody to pay it, either the A S O or for us, does take some time.
I think they probably understand that, they're aware of the system, you know. But uh, yeah, obviously, if they're released with. Yeah, they're released with the prescription, honestly, I mean, you can't. Monitor them, you're not babysitting them every day, so.
One, you wanna keep them on their medications, cause you don't want them to crash coming off of anything either. So, I mean. I know, they can't, they can't legally hold it for in case they come back.
Yes, I defer, you know, she needs to be in here to, whatever they think is the best thing, I mean, they have the process, they know what works, come up with.
Just kind of informing, you know, that's what she uh. They were talking about is, obviously, if they know that somebody's only gonna. Hopefully be a short time, you know, that they call and just get a short supply.
Right.
Yeah, they'll do.
Anything else for the good of the meeting? Want to take a brief recess? Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene at this time. Jessica, you still there?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, apologize for the pause, but uh we'll carry on with our meeting and the last thing we have is Shelley Hoyve. Uh, the Deputy Director Project or Auditor for Jackson County with a possible action on. Um, the drug grant coordinator position, so Shelley, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, last, I think it was Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, um Dawn met with myself, uh Lanay Birkin, Karen Wells. And Julie Fern uh to discuss what.
Maybe, maybe an introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, this is Dawn Nelson, uh she.
Do you want, Dawn, do you wanna give us some synopsis? Tell us some of your qualifications, introduce yourselves.
Thanks, I'm.
You bet.
I'm Dawn Nelson, I'm from Delmar and I have lived in this community for, oh. Since about, I think, two thousand, we moved back up here, I'm originally from Mooseleg area. And then raised three children through here and. I was a professor at University of Dubuque, uh last twelve years and. That's about what's going on right now, and so I left there in in May and. Looking for some new ideas.
What'd you teach?
What I teach, Excel, I love Excel and all kinds of different forms, Excel. So if you need something Excel, hurry you down, hurry you down, as you can see, the first thing I did is. Data analysis, Internet computers, that kind of stuff, so. That's short and sweet about me. So we met with Dawn to get a feel for how if she was interested in this, in the uh. The drug grant pro- program coordinator position. Um, for the last three years of the grant, uh starting today. Um, so we laid out what. It involves what what you, what she would have to do, um reporting, gathering of information. Um, being the the coordinator and liaison out in the community with um business, businesses. Coalition member, there's the Jackson County uh Prevention Coalition, um and student. Obviously students, since that's who we're trying to help, um and just the community in general. And going to the, any conferences that would help in. In relaying all of that information and gathering information uh to help with the grant. The results of the grant that we're trying to achieve, so.
So maybe just a brief update, you know, the the drug grant come about, I wanna say about seven years ago, are we in our seventh year?
We are just finished.
So as most people or some people may know, we lost our coordinator in Julie Fern, we've lost her, she went to, but she moved on to another position. So we uh, this position also works with law enforcement, emergency management, and basically the whole county. The whole operation, if you will, so um the schools and whatnot, so that was just a little background of why we're hiring somebody. Cause we lost our coordinator and. And to move forward with the grant, we have to have somebody in place that'll be the coordinator.
And this is not a county position, this is a contract hired through the.
Um, we kind, before we contracted with area substance.
Use council.
Yes, thank you, um A S A C, and they were the ones to hire Julie. So now Julie left and I don't know if if it was a. Mutual decision on A S A C's part or what was involved, but A S A C declined to. Renew the contract for this new year, so. Our proposal or our thought was that we would have the pro- program project coordinator. Handle the duties that A S A C was doing. They were gathering the information, um overseeing the. The duties of the program coordinator. Involved in that was providing space for the coordinator, um insurance, uh internet, phone. Um, paperwork, administrative help from the secretaries. And then at the end, so each month that they would get, gather all of the information from the schools and from the communities. In order to adhere to the grant requirements. And then at the end of each quarter, they would have to submit a report to the D F C, the the. Drug free communities program direct uh program officer. And uh, and then an annual report, which was just finished. Wow, middle of last month, no, middle of this month, sorry. And so where our thought process was. The only other possibility, well, we had. The only other possibility, well, we had two possibilities. CSAC, which is the Clinton Substance Area Council, um, they declined to have. To be the ASAC of, of the, um, grant now, um. So the only other op- option was the Robert Young, but they're based on the Davenport, so our thought was to have it all. Um, based here in Jackson County, and if the coordinator could do the job. Of what ASAC was doing and Julie Fern assures me that she could. Um, the coordinator could, um, Julie has offered to help. Train the, the new coordinator and to provide assistance. In getting all of those reports, gathering the information and getting those reports to the grants. With that being said, um. We're wondering, first off, if. We could, I, so the coordinator could be based somewhere in the courthouse. Penrose or courthouse or, you know, someplace, um, or. She could operate out of her home. Which I'm guessing you wouldn't really like. So. Whichever way we do it, the in-kind. Uh, expenses would go. Would be included, so we would have. So if it was, if it was the courthouse. We would charge a fee. Charge quote unquote, a fee for services and include that as in-kind. Whereas if the coordinator was working from home, then. Are you okay?
Yeah, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, good, um, we would, uh, on a fee schedule or something, we would include whatever costs.
I know when I talked to Linay a little bit, there is an office right next to hers that is available in case there's a lot of printing or whatever. I know somebody's in there, but they're.
We have a key, we have a key assigned to that person and we're trying to figure out. Um, I was gonna have Bjorn run the key fob to see, but we, we've given a key to that room to somebody.
And I wasn't planning on, other than if they have big printing, big printing, I know I can come in here and have that, but beyond that, I don't need. Cause I have, I have an office in the house.
So after the meeting last Thursday, this is something you think you can do, this is.
Yes, yes, I've actually kind of gotten a little bit pumped up. She left the meeting, she, it's a thing that she was excited. Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been on my mind, I have learned a lot in a short amount of time, I will, I will say that, so. Kind of running through the budget, even actually going through the budget, seeing where the numbers are and, and what you paid ASAC and how. That works and you and I kind of had to sit on, being a self-employed, you know, uh. Self-employed, basically, I'm a contractor, and what would all that involves, you know, self-employment tax and my own insurance. And my own, uh, retirement in comparison to working for somebody else, that's a whole new gamut, and so I have. Spent quite a bit of time learning in the last four or five days, so.
But as far as the programs and getting into the schools and the grant requirements and all that kinda stuff, that doesn't seem to be an issue?
Well, I've been in the schools, I was a substitute teacher before, so I've already been in the COVID schools, so I'm familiar. That's not, you know, that's gonna be pretty easy for me. Teaching, teaching has already been one of the things, so getting into people, talking to people. One of the things I noticed in here, there's some people who are trainers, so I was kind of looking forward to things. You know, in the future that are out here, I'm gonna be able to do that, not this year, I've got a lot of learning. I've got a lot of, but moving forward, there's things I can see that are already in my wheelhouse that I'll be able to move into. The, uh.
Well, it wouldn't be a, a classroom type.
No, it's not a class, but talking.
Yes, yes.
From the standpoint of being able to. Speaker. As being a speaker, that's where I guess where the, coming from is being able to talk.
Being comfortable in front of the.
I can talk, I, I can talk, I can talk.
Anybody have any questions for Dawn or?
No, I'm happy that you, uh, actually looked at it over and did your background work and. And decided, yeah, this is something you'd be excited about, I'm excited to hear society, yeah.
Well, the group, even the groups, I mean, I'm, I'm very familiar with law enforcement. And working with law enforcement is, is, I'm, I'm fine with that and. School, I mean, all groups of people, I can just, it's, that's kinda what's a lot of fun about it, when Julie was talking about it, was just the different groups. Where she gets to go, you know, the different things that she was involved in, I'm like, really?
Well, I like the fact that we're, if, if we can make this happen, it's maintaining a local presence for, we're either gonna give it back. Or maybe contract with somebody who lives in it, you know, that are based in Illinois and, and all that kinda stuff, so to me, this is.
And I don't want to give them that.
And a local face, I mean, obviously Dawn knows a lot of people, um, just being around and her kids and her.
Kids in the group.
Family life and stuff like that, so I mean, there's a lot of people out there, you know, I, again, like. You know, two out of the three of us knew Bellevue, you know, type of deal and, you know, you might have to make some more connections up. North further or whatever, but, you know, and we want. I would like to see a lot more involvement in all of the schools in Jackson County. And maybe, you know, Dummer that they come this direction once they get to that point where they're, you know.
Can do that, then, so. She says she was already involved in Bellevue sad, but getting something going in McColda and EV, I think was really good. Something I noticed, um. That I found, whether, I don't know if it was our discussion or something I saw on here where. It is limited, you can't get into the grade schools, because that's something that I thought about, okay, well, Dummer, geez, I'm right there in Dummer, but you, you. Can't get into the grade schools, this is only the upper levels, I'm not sure about middle school, I couldn't find anything anywhere in it.
Middle school, I believe, is, uh, a- available.
Is available, so, you know, that opens doors a little bit, but anyway, that's something that.
All right.
So we would just, um. The budget has already been set that we've submitted to the DFC, um. The budget salary includes the salary and the fringe benefits for insurance and stuff. Um, and office space and internet and phone and travel and. Uh, coalition expenses, so.
Do we have anything set up, like, so if, I miss, I mean. Who's making the decision if she's home-based or if she's out of.
I would.
An office, is that on us, is that?
Your call, yes.
You know?
Since you're the ones that would be contracting.
You know, so, so if, if she would be home-based and she had to do printing. Massive amounts to run a program or whatever, do we have a, a fee set up of what we would?
So in here, it says that on, in the budget. It lists, um, under supplies, that, so I figured that if it's a hundred, more than a hundred copies, if it's a hundred copies, you know, but. I can do that, but if it's more than a hundred copies, in on the budget in here, it said, uh, under supplies, I think it was. Was it ten cents a copy? Printing, that's like ten, so then that would be charged into, uh. General office, what is that, or?
Well, there's some printing and copying cost, but it's like six hundred dollars.
I think this budget is up to that, if you have.
This will be good for the grant to keep it going, or what do we need to do to transfer everything?
Adjust, um, because ASAC had such a large. They paid for, for Julie and for the fringe and for office space and wifi and all that kinda stuff. We have to redistribute. The budget dollars that ASAC was under, um, on the grant budget, so. Um, I need to get with Karen and Julie to find out exactly how to redistribute those figures. Um, and of course Karen's gone until tomorrow, um. So I, my proposal is to get with them to figure out how to redistribute that money and, um.
Do we have to do that before we can? Offer, offer contract side of the position?
No, I would make a suggestion that you offer. You specify how much you want to pay that person or, I guess. Lisa, what do you think, do we need to specify the amount or wait until after?
I think this needs to have county attorney review.
So, I mean, it's basically been set to ASAC to begin with, correct?
It was, yes.
But we're not changing, really changing anything to that fact. Does it have to be approved by the grant issuer?
The DFC grants, the grant officials, uh, they need to, we need to submit our changes. And we need to submit the key personnel change, um, Dawn.
They have to approve that before she's actually in that position?
No.
No.
No, we tell them what, who we've got. Yeah, I, I believe so, yes.
And I'm assuming the number's on page two here, under section two financial agreement, these were what were discussed about in the meeting, this is what the new budget will look like.
Which one are you, oh, what you.
Contract between.
That is for the current fig- current, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, so it would. The budget figures, I did not have, when I was doing this last night, I did not have this, the twenty-five, twenty-six in front of me. And I did not wanna make changes until I knew from you how you wanted to proceed. So these are the twenty-four, twenty-five figures.
Okay.
So it's increased because, um, a little bit of salary increase. And cost increases for. The coordinator position and from what ASAC submitted.
So I have the budget, listen.
You don't know what they are.
Do we, do we need to?
According to this budget, you gave me on Thursday, these are the numbers, so, so that's the number.
It went up fifteen, about fifteen hundred dollars from what's in that.
So this is the budget and I.
Do we have this come back next week for approval or with the current budget numbers in it or?
We can do that.
I mean, it's kinda hard to approve it when we don't have the right figures in front of us. So, if it's something you can. And adjust now, that's fine, I'm okay to wait a few minutes and do that, but if you're gonna need time, then I would say.
Think, yeah.
So are you gonna pay on a quarterly basis, are you gonna pay on a monthly, I mean, those are the kinda things that we need to work out.
So those are the, those are just, we just need to, we need to fine tune our details here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll get the correct numbers in there and fine tune it and everybody looks at it and says, yeah, or Nate. Um, I don't think we're, I think we're kinda following the agreement, we like to move forward, but. Keeping the grant in house or keeping it active and.
Or do we need to, uh? Point her today? And just approve the contract next week, but I don't know as far as the grant. Because it starts tomorrow, the fiscal year, the grant contract starts tomorrow.
The pointing, Dawn.
No. We don't have to, it'd be nice, we don't have to.
Actually start till Monday, so, we've got prior commitments for the rest of this week, if that makes a difference.
I just didn't know for the, the paperwork, if we say Dawn's our person, we'll finalize the contract next Thursday or next Tuesday, because we need the final.
And I know that you are going to approve the contract, I can make the changes in the drug grant.
And then we can have John or Brian look at it over the week and get it approved.
You know, I'm okay with, I would like to see in the contract that we pay on a monthly basis, so any. Bills that you would have to go against this, obviously, we'd need to get in, we'd have to let her know what our. Our pay dates are.
Disbursement.
Disbursement dates are, so she can get them in to you ahead of time.
And do you?
Do we need any upfront? Costs to get. This up and going.
No, well, what do you mean?
Well, I'm like, for, I'm, I'm assuming you have internet at home or whatever, if, if we are, are we in agreement on a home base or we. Want her in an office?
No, I mean, I, I, I assume that the duties can be fulfilled and.
Did Julie work at ASAC?
She had a laptop that she worked at.
I think we could make space available, available upon request, but figuring mostly it'll be a, at home. Kinda thing, are we okay with that?
I am.
So I would spell that out, but it, you know, it can be a hybrid. Type of situation and maybe spell out if she is in office, what. You got twenty-five dollar a day fee or something.
Is this a one-year contract?
Well, I, I would, to me, it would be for the.
Duration of the grant.
Duration of the grant, yeah, it's agreeable to both sides.
I would say duration of the grant, if the grant is law, it's conditional upon the.
The grant, and then we, and she said. Approved, so providing there's money there.
Right, providing that the grant is funded.
To move on after the three years, if there's more money to.
Right.
Continue on.
So, yeah, I think, you know, you're gonna want. You know, something in there about some type of hybrid. Majority at home, but it can be a hybrid position if need be, so like. We all know how home internet goes, it goes down and if you don't have internet service, you could.
Come up here. That's fantastic, thank you.
Do, uh, do some type of fee for daily office use, you know, I don't know what that.
Again, you can charge the grant and then if you're in kind.
Yes, you know, type of deal, um.
So basically, use the red figures in here for, remember on page two?
Updated to these numbers, right?
Yes, up, yes, I'm sorry, updated to the.
If they won't see that updated budget numbers.
Yeah, but our only, I mean, we're not gonna probably be renting.
No.
The whole, you know, she ain't got.
Office, a fee for office.
Yes. Um. And then.
Is there a laptop with this?
I, we will be buying a.
Okay, cause I don't wanna use my personal.
No, no, yeah. And even. There should be some type of.